During last week's meeting at Barry City Hall, the city council approved the development of up to four residences on one property, however, with specific conditions. Hi, this is Deepak and you're watching Simcoe Community Media. The maximum height of the additional residential units would be capped at 4.5 metres, and there must be a distance of more than one metre between the property line and the building. These conditions are aimed at preventing trees and maintaining the character of neighbourhoods. However, they make the construction of additional residences challenging. There were also two deputations regarding the zoning bylaw amendment.
In summary, if we must move forward with this citywide zoning amendment requiring four units to fulfil provincial policy, then I agree with the proposed amendments put forward by councillor Ripma with an additional item to address and protect boundary trees.
During the meeting, the council also approved more than $100,000 in funding for the airshow from the Tourism Reserve.
2024 Barry Airshow Event. One, that the city of Barry accept the opportunity from CFB Borden to deliver a 2024 Barry Airshow event on Barry's waterfront, and that staff in Recreation and Culture and Economic and Creative Development Departments work in partnership with CFB Borden, County of Simcoe, and the Lake Simcoe Regional Airport, and other community stakeholders to deliver the event. And two, that an additional $150,000 be allocated to the 2024 operating budget for a total budget of $180,000 to deliver a 2024 Barry Airshow, with up to $110,000 being funded from the Tourism Reserve and the remaining $70,000 to be raised through sponsorship.
Additionally, the council discussed the findings from speed camera enforcement. The finding unscored the severity of speeding problem in school zones.
16,348 people were speeding? That were recorded speeding within that area? Between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM in a school zone?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Courser. So on page three, you're talking about Anne Street. So it talks about the number of violations recorded, January, February, March, and that total is 35,674.
In three months, and this isn't the amount of people ticketed. There was 4,677.
Follow the timestamps in the description to jump to various sections of the video.
We'll now go on to deputations. We have two deputations this evening. We have a deputation request from Cathy Colbatch, and we have one emergency deputation request from Karen Buck from the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024 regarding motion 24G060, the proposed citywide amendment to permit four units on residentially zoned lands. For the deputation requests received after the printing of the agenda, a vote in favour of the majority of councils required in order for the deputation to proceed. So all those in favour of the emergency deputation? And it carries, it's unanimous. So in accordance with the city's procedural bylaw, each deputation will be permitted a maximum of five minutes to speak. And I'll call upon Ms Colbatch to come down to the podium. And after you start speaking, you'll have five minutes as just described.
Hopefully it won't take five minutes, not even three. Mayor Nuttall and members of council, firstly, I would like to take a moment to congratulate the city on the most recent announcements for both federal and provincial funding. $33 million will go a long way building homes and improving its infrastructure. Secondly, I would like to commend councillor Ripma on his proposed amendments related to setbacks in height for ARUs specifically, and councillor Harris for his comments on the fact we have been and continue to meet and exceed our targets. These amendments created great discussion around what had already been amended and approved by council in 2021 with public engagement and as a result of our shared learning and lived experiences. The previous current year's stats show us that there has been and continues to be an uptick in second and third suites. This has helped us to reach our provincial targets without adding a fourth unit. So, we are on track. Do we actually need to add a fourth unit? Accessory dwelling units have proven to be too costly for builders. As a result, do not create affordable units. Rents upwards of $3,000 monthly, given our current economic environment, are not affordable. It only makes sense that building additional units within a home already built is going to cost less than starting from scratch. So restore, repurpose, and reuse. Not all of our housing solutions will come in the form of ARUs within our built boundary. We should also be addressing second and third units as of right outside of our built boundaries and into new subdivisions. New subdivisions should have a good mix of types of units, not just single-family homes, which a lot of them currently do. But rental apartments, duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. Mixed use makes for healthy communities. In summary, if we must move forward with this citywide zoning amendment requiring four units to fulfil provincial policy, then I agree with the proposed amendments put forward by councillor Ripma with an additional item to address and protect boundary trees. I'm on the trees again. Although referred to in staff comments, most homeowners do not know or understand the Ontario Forestry Act, nor do we educate them in this regard. And this is in relation to comments on page 17, item 11, which is speaking about reducing tree cover. And it speaks to boundary trees located in rear yards may be impacted by ARUs within an accessory building or structure. However, boundary trees remain considered under the Ontario Forestry Act. The Forestry Act has requirements for all property owners who share boundary trees, including penalties relating to injury or destruction. And having said that, nobody knows about the Ontario Forestry Act, so I'm wondering if there's something that we could do by way of amendment in this to help protect the boundary trees. And thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your deputation this evening. Just quickly, Deputy Mayor Thompson has a question, but before that, I just want to just correct one thing, and I apologize saying this, but isn't the provincial government that's requested the fours of right? It's actually the federal government that's requested the fours of right? Deputy Mayor. Okay, I took away your question. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, well, thank you so much for your presentation, and we will be dealing with this. We're going to take a quick break before we do, but we're going to deal with the second deputation, and then we'll be dealing with the matter that you've given your deputation on right after that, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much. I'll now call upon Karen Buck to approach the podium for a deputation. Welcome to council. And you as well have five minutes for your deputation, once you begin speaking.
Mayor Nuttall and student Mayor Gabriel Gagnon, and councillors, good evening. I'm Karen Buck, I reside in Barry Ward 1. My home neighbourhood is located in east of Johnson Road and south of Georgian Drive, so that you sort of know where I am coming from. I am concerned that there is both an accessibility and affordability issue affecting Barry residents with regard to housing. And I am in support of the proposed citywide amendment to permit new rental units. Now, I was very impressed with the deputation ahead of me, and she has actually done her homework, whereas I have not, because I haven't been involved in this issue for very long. So I would agree with her that on residentially zoned lands, there could be building approved, but only where it is deemed to be compatible with the existing neighbourhoods. The proposed four-unit housing solution should be available, and I put that in quotations, depending on whether "four" is actually needed, as one of the housing options to Barry residents, especially if it is an option that increases both availability and affordability. And I would say affordability is very important. And so I would hope that the people who are involved with the city of Barry are definitely using that as a very strong criteria. I am looking forward to developers in the city working on this housing option with the hope that it will increase both accessibility and affordability, and that the design and location is compatible with existing neighbourhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your deputation. Are there any questions for? I'm seeing none. So before we get to the committee reports, I'm going to take a 10-minute break till 7:35. Is that enough time in Anneclerk? So at 7:35, we will reconvene to deal with the committee reports, and then go into the rest of the evening. Deputy Mayor Thompson, I believe you have the committee reports.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. That's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's section A of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The section A of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated to be received. This is 24G051, reported to the Affordability Committee dated February 27, 2024, and 24G052, reported to the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee dated March 6, 2024. Are there any comments or questions in regards to receiving of these two motions? Seeing none, all those in favour, and it carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's section B of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The section B of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. This is 24G053, the Nine Mile Portage signage. 24G054, the zoning bylaw amendment application for 284, 286 Dunlop Street West and 119 and 121 Henry Street. 24G055, Sherwood Court, no parking any time investigation. 24G056, acquisition of road widening for pedestrian connection and future improvements to 28 Bayfield Street. 24G057, waste management by law alignment with waste system changes. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motions on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favour, and it carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's section C of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The section C of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. 24G058, amendment to the Terms of Reference of Funding for the poet laureate program. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor?
I'm going to hold that?
If you have an amendment, you can move the amendment right now.
Okay, I do have an amendment. My amendment is for paragraph 1A. Sorry, I have to put it over the floor. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, moved by myself, councillor Courser, and seconded by councillor Congle, that motion 24G058, a section C of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, be amended by deleting paragraph 1A and replacing it with the following. That two members of council be added to the composition of the poet laureate selection committee as identified in the current poet laureate terms of reference. And I can speak to that.
Any of the motion, please. It's moved by councillor Courser and seconded by councillor Congle. The motion 24G058 of section C of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, be amended by deleting paragraph 1A and replacing it with the following. 1A, that two members of council be added to the composition of the poet laureate selection committee as identified in the current poet laureate terms of reference. Madam Clerk, is not the exact opposite of what was approved?
Deputy Mayor Nuttall, what was approved was the current terms of reference would stand as they are now. They were previously adopted by council. So the current terms of reference would still have the library and whatnot. And we were just, we were amending that last week to add the, replace it with the three members of council, because it's not adopted by council, the change actually hasn't taken place. Do you want, I have maybe an explanation?
So if something's adopted at General Committee, and just for my, and we go the opposite direction at City Council, I thought we had to refer that back to General in order to deal with that?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to you, Mayor Nuttall. No, we don't have to go back to General Committee. We can do amendments at council. If you want to refer it back to General Committee for further discussion, that's certainly an option as well.
Okay, council floor is yours.
Right, thank you. I just wanted to speak to a very passionate conversation last week regarding the poet laureate and the committee in which to decide that position. I believe that we have a very passionate and involved council, and I think that's very obvious by all of our other committees that we always show up to around the table. It's usually a full house. Everyone usually has an open conversation. And I believe that this proposal comes to that, the motion was, or the new changes, was to allow for all of us to, like, for all of us, but for council to actually be actively involved in this process as well. And I felt that it wasn't, I wasn't comfortable with taking away our community partners and the people that within the community that would be sitting on a committee. I think that we should be inviting more people outside of council to be making, like, to be involved in some decisions. So I thought that if by changing the makeup of the, what was previous to three members of council and then two other committee members, to change it to be more in line with our other advisory committees, maybe, where we'd have two added members of council, because the actual money that is tied to the poet laureate program is in line with our other advisory committees, and it seemed that it would be more welcoming to our community and welcoming the voices of our community to make these decisions.
Thank you, councillor, for your comments. Are there any other questions or comments with regards to the amendment on the poet laureate program? Councillor Dixon?
Yeah, I have a quick one, and perhaps I should have brought it up last week, but I'm curious as to what kind of prompted this discussion in the first place, the change. I don't know, through you, Mayor Nuttall, who could answer that?
I think the origin of the change was a request that came in for more funding to the position of poet laureate. And then there was, I think, an amendment on it. Was it a committee, Deputy Mayor? I don't think I was here at that point. But it went, was passed by that committee and then brought to General. Any other questions or comments on the item? Seeing none, I'll call the vote on the amendment, all those in favour? Three, all those opposed? And it is, the amendment has lost. Back to the main motion, are there any other amendments or questions or comments?
Just recorded vote.
Recorded vote's been requested. Councillor Morales?
Thank you, sir, a quick comment. Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. That board is not the same as the BIA, so I'll start with that. But I just want to share a little anecdote. I hope that it works out. I'm aspirational with the amendment defeated. I'm aspirational, here's why. In my short time at the BIA, and councillor Harris was there as well, one of the things we quickly learnt is they reduced the councillor membership from two to one. And it wasn't something we did. It was the fact that through its growing pains that the BIA had, they realised that there is such a thing as too many board members. There was quorum issues, there was just synergies. And that sweet spot for the BIA, I think they went from 10, and they asked for 11, and then they went all the way down to nine or eight. They didn't care so much about even number. And depending on the board, seven to nine is kind of the optimal thing. So I do sympathise with the comments about more voices the better, but to all the comments everybody said last week, I feel confident. And again, I'm aspirational as to the impact this is going to have. And just wanted to share that anecdote that both councillor Harris and I went through.
Thank you, councillor. Last call for any other comments or questions on the matter? Seeing none, recorded votes have been requested, madam clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I'm going to start with councillor Ripma.
Yes.
Councillor Nixon?
No.
Councillor Congle?
No.
Councillor Courser?
No.
Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Nagusi?
Yes.
Councillor Harvey?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
Yes.
Councillor Morales?
Yes.
And councillor Hamilton?
No.
And Mayor Nuttall?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's section D of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. It's section D of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. This is 24G059, the development of disc golf plan. Are there any questions or comments on the disc golf plan? Seeing none, all those in favour, and it carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. 24G060, the proposed citywide amendment to permit four units on residentially zoned lands. Are there any questions or comments?
I have an amendment, please.
Yep, councillor Hamilton.
It is moved by myself and seconded by councillor Courser that motion 24G060 of section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024 be amended by removing the words "within the built boundary" from the end of paragraph one. And I can speak to that.
If you could pass the motion first, please. It's moved by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Courser. The motion 24G060, section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, be amended by removing the words "within the built boundary" from the end of paragraph one. Councillor Hamilton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Nuttall. I think there was great dialogue on this item last week, so I'm hoping not to rehash the dialogue and open up further debate. I think councillor Ripma put together a very good compromise in terms of his amendment and what staff had suggested, and also what currently exists for the three units as of right in regards to secondary structure setbacks. So I was pleased to see that, and pleased to see the consensus around the table on that. I also think it was a very plausible conversation to look at maybe approaching the annexed lands differently, and really looking at how we can tap into these undeveloped lands and encourage maximum density in these areas. So again, it was agreed with that intent. However, after Wednesday night and upon further follow-up conversations with staff, it was recognised that by the definition of annexed lands does not actually include areas that have been developed already. So by adding those four words "within built boundary", you're actually still excluding hundreds of homes in the Salem and Hewitts areas that have already been built, developed, established neighbourhoods. Actually, Ms Banfield just gave me the number. It's about 2,000 homes that are already in existence there, so these are existing neighbourhoods. And I think by isolating them and creating different standards for this sub-population, sub-geographic region, it gets to what councillor Courser said next week, or last week, which I thought was very important. We don't want to create the perception of having different standards across the city or singling out, you know, certain wards or subsets of wards unnecessarily. So this is really just to sort of clear up. I think I spoke to many of you, and most of us has assumed when we said "within built boundary" would actually include any developed area, and in effect does not. It does not speak to those homes that are developed within these annexed lands already. So this just goes to correct that assumption that I think most of us made. I do still totally agree with the conversation about how do we look at the annexed lands that are undeveloped, that haven't been tapped into yet, and how do we work with the development community in terms of maximising the density in these areas? And I think this is a bigger conversation beyond just setbacks in relation to secondary dwellings. I think there's lots of opportunities here to have further discussion about setbacks for primary dwellings to encourage, you know, threeplexes, fourplexes, like we heard from the deputant earlier this morning, or earlier this evening. I think there's conversations about DCs on fourth units as well. So all of that is separate, I think, and I think we still deserve to have the conversation about how we approach the undeveloped annexed lands. But this amendment specifically is just to clear up, I think, confusing language last week by adding the "within built boundary".
The amendment's on the floor. Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Any other questions or comments with regards to Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I will be in support of this amendment. So there's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of dialogue after Wednesday's meeting, and, you know, and not minimising it. But it's a housekeeping, as there was some liberty taken to the word of "built boundary", not realising that it did affect people who currently live in Barry or have purchased under the pretence of a certain thing. But in no way was it to segregate of other people, because if we look at history, and it's always, the actual standards have changed, you know, in our home building. Like, so you look at some of our older neighbourhoods, you know, and I spoke with councillor Ripma today, that the standard small lot would have been 50 by 120, would have been in a 1960 subdivision. And then it got into the 40s and stuff. And now in the annexed lands, we're building in 35. So there's, standards evolve, you know, and things move. So it was never about the segregation of, you know, current residents to, it was more looking at incentivising, utilizing, and making it equitable throughout the city, where there are a few of our councillors and our colleagues that are going to feel the brunt of this. And we were trying as a collective group to, you know, spread it around. And as one of the deputants said, that mixed use or mixed built forms makes great communities. So I will be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other questions or comments on the matter? I'm going to go with councillor Morales and then councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I had a bit to say, but Deputy Mayor Thompson said it better, and nailed it on the head, and I have spoken enough for the last meeting. So I just wanted to give the compliment, what credit's due on this for councillor Hamilton. A lot of people feel this way, that's fine, but I really respect her passion. Again, we want to create consistent policy. And a lot of people who may not traverse through those roads that are still being cleaned up and the sod maybe hasn't gone in, some of these annexed lands have already have the subdivision, and the sod's going in this weekend or in two weeks. So for them, it would be a little bit of a unfairness, inconsistency, whatever word you want to use. So I definitely support councillor Hamilton in at least flagging that concept. Obviously, I still have my struggle with this from another perspective, but I've already said that, but I do want to emphasise because she definitely brought this home into the table, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor Morales, and now councillor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. And it was an interesting discussion, the last time I was virtual, so I, but it was a great discussion to be listening to and to be a small part of. Just wanted to, I support the motion. I think it's a good amendment to clean up the "within the built boundary". But just wanted to have a quick little comment on equity or equality. Equity might be that everybody had the opportunity, despite the size of their yard, to have a detached secondary dwelling. So I think, but I'm not going down that road. I'm just saying that if you change the size of the lot over time, then equity would be, you know, changing the parameters to allow you to have one. So I think of the example of equity when you see the people at a sporting event, and people are standing on little stools to keep themselves at the same eye level. You wouldn't give the six-five person the same stool as you gave the five-five person. So anyway, just an example of kind of, as we think about equity, we may have, other way to think about that, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favour, and it carries. Are there any other questions or comments, amendments? Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that motion 24G60 of section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024 be amended by adding the following paragraph, the following to paragraph one, that the original setbacks as presented in table 5.9.9.2 in staff report DV011-24 continue to apply to the approved, proposed, and future draft plans of subdivisions in the Salem and Hewitts secondary plan areas where building permits have not been issued for construction. And I can speak to that after you.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The motion 24G060 of section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024 be amended by adding the following paragraph, sorry, the following to paragraph number one, that the original setbacks as presented in table 5.2.9.2 in staff report DV011-24 continue to apply to approved, proposed, and future draft plans subdivision in the Salem-Hewitts secondary plans, plan areas where building permits have not been issued for their construction. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. You know, like I said, I'm going to keep it very brief. We just had the conversation about people who already live here, people who have bought under certain pretense, and this is not affecting them. So I think this is a way to kind of look at some incentives to areas as councillor Hamilton, who represents the area, has said. who represents the area, has said, there's, we need to tap into some of the unbuilt locations and lands there, so.
Any other comments or questions with regards to the amendment? Yes, Counsel Rittma.
Yes, I'm in support of this. I think what it does is it solves the problem that Counselor Hamilton had, and it gives us still the opportunity to reduce the setbacks. So I think it's a good, good way to go.
Any other comments or questions on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor? It carries. Are there any other amendments or statements or questions on the main motion? Yes, Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I've got another amendment moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Negusi, that Motion 24-G-060, Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20th, 2024, be amended by adding the following paragraph, that staff investigate opportunities for non-condominmized, condommuniized, that's a big word, fourplexes for the purpose of sale in approved, proposed, and future draft plans of subdivision in the Salem-Hewitts Secondary Plan areas where building permits have not been issued for their construction and report back to Affordability Committee.
It's moved by Counsel Harvey, seconded by Counsel Negusi, the Motion 24G060, Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20th, 2024, be amended by adding the following paragraph, that staff investigate opportunities for non-condominmized fourplexes for the purpose of sale and approved, proposed, and future draft plans of subdivision in the Salem-Hewitts Secondary Plan areas where building permits have not been issued for the construction and report back to Affordability Committee. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. I think this is just one more tool that just in the past week has become part of our dialogue behind the scenes and obviously trying to think of different tools in the toolbox and thinking a little bit outside of the box as to some ways that we can make housing a little more affordable. And especially when you look at, a lot of what we're seeing is condos being built. Well, on top of your mortgage, now you're also potentially dealing with anywhere between a four to almost $1,000 a month condo fee attached to that, too. So this affords a potential opportunity for fourplexes to be constructed without having a condo attached to it, like we're seeing in the odd townhouse complex, but even, most of the townhouses are all condo-based, and it really does pose an extra hurdle to, especially people just getting into the market, where they're struggling to pay the mortgage, let alone think about the fact that they've got a condo payment on top of it. And I actually know of one person, for instance, that didn't even factor in the condo piece into it, and all of a sudden they're like, ooh, how am I going to make up that extra over 500 bucks a month? So that's where I think this is a good idea for staff to investigate and report back, and it definitely does sound like something that is doable from the information that we've been provided thus far. And I'll be quite honest with you, I got to put kudos out to you, too, because I think it should be recognized that a lot of the heavy lifting with this has been done by yourself and your staff in your office.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Harvey, and thank you, Mayor Nettle. I think, and credit to you, you have been saying this when the conversation started around doing both increasing housing through rental stock and also homeownership. So, and I, not to adjudicate the three and four units per dwelling or per lot, pardon me, but the one challenge with that approach, although it adds housing, it also makes properties more expensive. And I think, you know, in my research, trying to find out evidence on that particular method for adding housing stock, the truth is, it does make housing more costly. And I think having this balanced approach where we're trying to also find ways to make housing more affordable is the way forward. So I certainly appreciate this effort and I think it makes perfect sense and look forward to seeing what we can do to actually make housing more affordable. So thank you.
Counsel Hamilton.
Thank you, and through you, I just also want to reiterate, I think this is a great collective effort since last Wednesday and really diving into this, so I appreciate this motion in particular. I think this is exactly what the half-funding from the federal government is intended and purposed to do, right? So fourplexes, maximizing density, and creating more affordable options. So bang on, thank you for putting this forward and absolutely supportive of this.
Counsel Corser.
Just having a quick conversation, the, so getting more clarity on this, I wanted to actually just say that this, a lot of people think that cooperative housing is rental only, but if I'm understanding this correctly, this is pretty much another form of cooperative housing, because you have four units that are purchased separately, and there's an agreement between the people who have the units for care of. Is this?
I think that the reason we're asking staff to investigate is kind of threefold. One, what's legal, what's not.
Okay.
Two, what fits for the city of Barry. And three, I mean in terms of the physical, but three, what fits for the Barry in terms of the city of Barry for the structure. So you're right, it could end up being between the owners. It also could be built into the purchase and sale agreements. So this person's responsible for that, that person's responsible for that, and the deal isn't between the owners, it's between the purchaser and the home builder. So, you know, I don't, the answer's I don't know, but staff investigate, they may come back and say, we can't do this. In fact, and I was under the impression, like Counsel Hamilton just said, that this was part of, would fall right under the federal, I guess, criteria. It doesn't necessarily fit weirdly. So, you know, it's like, other duties is assigned, let's hope it fits there, but we don't know, and we'll get that back.
Then I absolutely would support this because this would fall under some of my, the information coming back would be very interesting to take a look at other opportunities in that space.
Any other questions or comments? Just before we vote on this, yeah, I've done a lot of work on this, so have a lot of other people. And the beauty of this is we get to butt heads, and I hate butting heads in these meetings. I love, I love when we can try to figure out something that works for all parts of the city. And so, you know, this is another potential option. It's not a silver bullet to deal with the housing crisis. It's just maybe one more thing that could happen, or maybe not. But the consistent thing we've heard from the federal and provincial governments about the city of Barry is that their headspace is in the right place, and I think this falls right in line with that. It may not mean this works, but we're trying new and different and innovative things than no one else is to try to meet the day. So thank you, Counsel Harvey, and thank you for all, Counsel, for the work that you've been doing on these items this week. All in favor of the amendment? And that carries, do I have any other amendments or statements or questions?
Counsel Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Harvey, that Motion 24-G-060 of Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20th, 2024, be amended by adding the following paragraph, that staff investigate the removal of development charges on fourth units in the Salem and Hewitts Secondary Plan areas for approved, proposed, and future draft plans of subdivision where building permits have not been issued for their construction and report back to Affordability Committee. And as I'm passing this down, members of council would have got an electronic copy with a section I didn't read that was crossed out just because of a duplication error.
The Motion 24G060, Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20th, 2024, be amended by adding the following paragraph, after I say it was moved by Counsel Morales and seconded by Counsel Harvey, that staff investigate the removal of development charges on the fourth units in Salem-Hewitts Secondary Plan areas, Plan Areas for approved, proposed, and future draft plans of subdivision where building permits have not been issued for the construction and report back to Affordability Committee. Counsel, the floor is yours, and then I have a question for you after that.
Thank you. Mayor Nettle, one of the things I always remember about this housing crisis that's been going on for a while, but this discussion this recent term, is when you said at a past meeting publicly here, you said, your first house cost like 280, 60, something. That, the reason, yeah, there you go. The reason I'm bringing that up specifically is, A, kudos to you for saying that, and it's, Mayor Cam Guthrie today on online made a post, and his post was essentially saying to the citizens of Guelph, I know I talk a lot about housing, I know I push back, I'm hoping I took a screenshot of it quickly so I can tell everybody, but I know I do those things, and some people are pushing back, and here's the reason, and a picture speaks a million words, Mayor Nettle, I know we're Barry, but this is so closely related. What he essentially said was, in 1999, Rachel and I were 20 and 23 years old and just married, 1999. I had a salary of $21,700 a year, and Rachel was working part-time at eight bucks an hour at a retail store in the mall. I sold my drum set, and we know he loves his drums, my baseball card collection and more, and we somehow scraped together just under $10,000 as a required down payment on this house, which looks just like an East End house or War II house equivalent in Barry, that we bought for $125,500. Yes, we qualified for a mortgage. Today, our kids are 21 and 20 years old. As things currently sit, they will never have the same opportunity as we did. And not just for homeownership, even rental is unaffordable. So he says, when you see me consistently being passionate about housing issues and advocacy for reforms and to make things easier for more supply and choices in housing types, yes, I'm doing it for everyone, but I'm doing it especially for them and their generation. And he has a picture of the listing, looks very 1999 font of the house and the prices. Not trying to be dramatic, yes for Barry, not Guelph, that goes a long way. You said it like a year early, this is what we're dealing with. And if this is another tool in that tool shed, we're just getting staff to investigate on the DCs, then so be it. And specifically the language about it being in new subdivisions, et cetera, et cetera, I think there's a good opportunity. Let's see if our market responds. And actually, other municipalities do waive, I can think of at least one that waived the fourth, the DC on the fourth unit, so this is unprecedented as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Morales. Just if Counsel will give me the ability to ask a question. So the one thing I think that's missing from this, and this is because I was late on providing any feedback, so this is on me, is subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs of the Province of Ontario, which is required. Is it possible for an amendment to come to your amendment to add that phrase in?
Yes, I believe it has to be in writing. If it's acceptable to the clerk, if you want to write it on that paper now, initial it, I don't know if that's sufficient.
The quickest way to do it would be just to withdraw the amendment, reintroduce it with that written on it, and then we can go from there.
Perfect. So I will withdraw it, speak really slowly as Mayor Nettle writes, but I won't talk.
Usually I make fun of everyone else's chicken scratch, and now you get to make one of mine.
I'll pick my battles. Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Harvey, that Motion 24-G-060, Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20th, 2024, be amended by adding the following paragraph, that staff investigate the removal of development charges on fourth units in the Salem and Hewitts Secondary Areas for approved, proposed, and future draft plans of subdivision where building permits have not been issued for the construction and report back to Affordability Committee, comma, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing for the Province of Ontario. I've seen that acronym enough to know what it means. No, not the CAM story. I don't want people to cry again.
Okay, it's moved by Counsel Morales, seconded by Counsel Harvey, that Motion 24G060, Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 20th, 2024, be amended by adding the following paragraph, that staff investigate the removal of development charges on fourth units in the Salem-Hewitts Secondary Plan Areas for approved, proposed, and future drafts, draft plans of subdivision where building permits have not been issued for the construction and report back to General Committee, and be subject to the approval of the Minister of the Municipal Affairs and Housing for the Province of Ontario. And that is on the floor. Are there any other comments or questions?
Just a very quick comment. I don't want to tell that story again. I don't want to tell any of those stories. We need to do our part, the province needs to do our part, the feds need to do their part. Can't believe that we're like 15 years behind in building, I can't believe policy changed in the 80s, 90s. And yeah, enough of those stories, let's change the narrative. And also, if there is a second round for the federal housing accelerator fund to our staff, this might be another little nice addendum, it's like, look, we didn't just stop doing things after we got the money, and so let's get more money for the residents of Barry if there's second funding.
I am all for more money. Any other questions or comments on, yep, Counsel Harv?
Yeah, thanks, Senator Mayor Nettle. Obviously, I support it because I did second it, but I think another thing that got identified through conversations with our development community this week, too, was how these fourth units don't become economical because of the DCs that are involved with them. And if we can use some of this accelerator funding to assist in that, to help promote some of these accessory dwellings, we're all that much further ahead in trying to create some more affordable type of built form. So for that, I hope that we're able to do this, but obviously there's a whole host of other issues that are attached to it, too, especially because as a municipality, we have to remain whole and things like that. So, and that's where we have our CFO that comes into that, to see how we can pull this off. Deputy Mayor shaking his head, no.
The CFO is not making eye contact with anyone right now.
Thank you, Counsel Harvey. Any other comments or questions around, Counsel Kungel?
Thank you, and while I've been watching Mr. Miller for any strong nonverbals on this, mentioning DCs feels a little triggering at this point in time. So I guess I would just say, you know, I've got questions that this raises, and I'm not sure if that will come back in the staff investigation, but, and maybe I'm looking at it too simply and it's a quick conversation, but when we talk about, you know, the intention of fourth units being more economical, this is couched into a very particular area. So what's to say if there's a sale of property, houses come down, there's a redevelopment that fits the same scope? How are we going to see DCs on this? So what impact could this have while we're being very specific to a particular part of Barry if development does change into a different area and we've just created a benefit financially?
It's certainly an option for this to be applicable across the city. That's not consistent with the feedback I've had from members of council around the city, not just on this item, I mean, on the whole conversation of fourth units, et cetera. So I'll leave that with you.
And Counsel Kungel, sorry, because I moved the amendment and I've been bringing this to the table for a couple of months. That's why the wording is specific to Salem. That was purposeful, so.
Sorry, do I still have the floor?
No, well, you addressed a question to my amendment, so I'm going to answer it. Through you, Mayor Nettle.
I did not.
Well, you're questioning my amendment on that. Fair enough. So clarification through you, Mayor Nettle.
Thank you. So I'd look to staff, Mr. Miller, if that would be part of the scope, just for clear for when we're putting a motion like this on the floor, and it is specifically bound to a certain geographic area, should a development happen within the built boundary that aligns to this, is there cause for someone to claim that they should have rights to a DC being waived? So just looking at understanding what are the pros and cons here around how this could be applied outside of where it's being directed, if you have the same type of built design?
Point of order, that's not part of the motion. That's not part of the amendment. That's very clear. So, sorry, to clarify my point of order, my amendment is very specific in nature and scope, so the question in hand is not to the amendment. If she wants to speak to the main motion, then so be it, but my amendment is very specific.
I think if I understand the question correctly, it's if passed specific, if the fourth unit DC waiver is passed specifically for the Salem and Hewitts Creek secondary plans, is, are we opening up the opportunity for others inside the boundary to sue to gain that same access? Is that, am I right?
Yeah, what's the risk or impact of this as a consequence?
So I think it's actually applicable to the motion because the motion is putting something on the floor. It may result in an amendment on your motion, and so I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Miller or maybe, maybe the answer is you'll come back and let us know as part of any sort of staff engagement.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, so we will, we will report back, but remember the Development Charges Act is extremely prescribed, and we'll report back that you have some options. You can open your bylaw, you can provide this exemption, you can make it area-specific within your bylaw, but the DC Act as written now is, this is not a But the DC Act as written now is, this is not a mandated discount that the province is giving. So, in the end, you have to fund it. So, you have to keep the development charges whole. So, if you're going to give a discount in a particular area, which you can do, you have to also identify a funding source unless the Development Charges Act legislation were to change.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm just a little confused. I took it that this amendment deleted the words Salem and Hewitt secondary plan. And in that case, if I read it correctly, then...
No, it doesn't delete. It says, "Staff investigate the removal of development charges on fourth units in the Salem-Hewitt secondary plan areas for approved, proposed, and future draft plans of subdivision."
Oh, okay. All right, that's fine. Then I enter.
Council Hamilton.
Thank you, and through you, I definitely support the amendment as proposed here, and I think Council Kangal actually raised a really excellent question in terms of what's the risk for it. But I personally agree to limiting to these undeveloped lands in the annexed areas for a number of reasons. I think, one, this is a great way to work with developers and encourage developers to look at approaching net new neighborhoods differently than we have in the past. I think this incentivizes them in a way where we haven't done before to maximize density, but it does so in a very balanced way, that we're not impacting the mature neighborhoods and existing sort of feel that residents have right now that we all love about the city. So, I think we're putting forward a really, really balanced approach where we're pushing it as far as we can within the current built boundary areas without pushing it so far that we're really going to lose the look and feel of our city and why people live here. So, we have a tremendous opportunity with these untapped lands to not negatively impact existing residences. So, I'm hopeful that we can move forward with this specific area, but I do agree, it's going to be important for us to look at the risk and make sure we mitigate that going forward, but I will support this as it is.
Council Morales?
Yeah, very quickly, Mayor Nettle. Actually, I'm very thankful for your addendum, your last one, because "subject to ministry approval" really nicely ties in that language from our treasure, that it's, you've got to follow the rules. Maybe they might change the rules and make an exemption for Barry. Maybe they might change the rules overall in the province, or maybe they say, "Good job, you got to fund it yourself, but guess what, you're going to probably be eligible for one of our funds." So, there's probably three options and more that I'm missing. So, that, I think that really puts a nice bow on the end with your comments, and let's get the information back and go from there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, I've been told about 100 times by our CFO and by our CAO that if you touch development charges, then the existing taxpayer is going to pay for it. So, if you want to take money from your residents and give it to developers, that's the way to do it. That's why, which none of us want to do, I assume, that's why we need to have the language in place that it's subject to approval from the Province of Ontario. That's what protects our residents. If the Minister for Municipal Affairs and Housing signs off on a request that would allow this fourth unit piece to happen, then we can proceed. If he doesn't or they don't, as there was other options, just I communicated on how this could happen, then I don't see this happening because I certainly wouldn't support, and I don't think anyone on this table would support us taking money from the tax base and supplementing this going forward. I will be very transparent with members of council. This conversation is already happening with the minister. It's been happening on a number of fronts because if we are going to be aggressive on getting housing built, it's actually the laws of the province that are perhaps holding us back in some places. And so, it doesn't mean we'll adopt it, it doesn't mean that we'll run with it, but if we don't get the information, we'll certainly never do it. So, thank you to, I think everybody's come together on this, and thank you to Council Morales for the motion as well and for all the hard work on this. So, I will call the vote. All those in favor, and it carries. Now, on the main motion as amended, Council Kangal, I had you down.
Thanks, just a comment leading from, I think, a conversation that was more broader based, just around four units as a right on certain properties and getting more into, I think, at some point in time, finding a table for us to have conversations and whether that's a direction now, maybe not, but I think soon, to staff, maybe at a committee level about what's the impact then when we talk about certain types of density on certain parcels of land. And one example I brought up was current bylaws, the number of dogs, and actually I was mistaken, it's not two, it's three. So, if you have four families, four units on a parcel, you have a potential legally of up to 12 dogs. So, that's not an anti-pro conversation about that bylaw, but I think that's one example of what is the impact of some of the things that we are facilitating to the benefit of housing and seeing development and getting housing to market, but when we talk about your neighborhoods and healthy living and that dynamic. And so, I'm assuming that's one of probably several that we might need to think about, a way in which to identify the complexities of what are the positive and negative consequences of some of these pieces specific to fourth unit.
Yeah, absolutely. You raised this last week as well. So, I think staff can take that away. Perhaps you can go and work with them if it's an item for discussion that's required. I would guess that would be with Ms. Banfield and our clerk, and the two of them and yourself can try to come up with something to come back because there's no question, right? There's just no question. So, and it may not be restrictions, it may be we need to have more X for the amount of houses that are going forward, so.
And if I may, just in response to that, kind of opened it up because I only know what I know, but whether that's bylaw or other individuals kind of identifying, have you thought about this consideration? I think it's an opportunity now for us to kind of gather that intelligence and then talk a bit about how do we look at that in a fair way.
Absolutely. Again, I would encourage that through, you know, side conversation and item coming. Okay? Any other comments, Council Corser?
Thank you. I guess this is a comment as well, and over the broader conversation, I'm not sure if this is a place that, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. The conversations that talking, Vince, talking to Council Hamilton about the language that we use of built boundary and annexed lands, when people, as Council Hamilton has pointed out, people have lived on annexed land for quite some time, where we talk about having an inclusive city and the language that we use when we talk about different areas of the city, I don't know if this is technical language that is considered through you, Mayor, I guess, to Ms. Banfield?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Council Corser. There actually are very technical terms. So, built boundary is actually a provincial term, and the other piece would be greenfield area, so that some, they actually are very technical terms. They have in our official plans some different provisions and policies. So, while the language might be different, we don't call them, typically we don't call them the annexed lands anymore, but there are technical terms of the built boundary and the greenfield area.
Okay, further that, if I may. So, this, with the greenlands and the built boundary, so the built boundary is a certain geographical area around a certain piece of the city, but there's built areas outside that, that's just what we call the area traditionally as in city planning or layout. I'm not sure how we get to a description of built boundary.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Council Corser. Again, it's defined by the province, and it's really, as I said, the easiest way to think about it in the city of Barry's context is the built boundary. Another reference is sometimes you hear the former, the former boundary of the city of Barry, and then the greenfield areas are the lands that were annexed from the town of Innisville. But again, they're technical provincial terms about greenfield development and built boundary development, and the policies have always been about actually splitting development in municipalities like the city of Barry, splitting the development 50/50. So, 50% of the population growth should be intensification and infill, and 50% of growth should be in a greenfield area. That's trying to balance it out, and certainly we're really fortunate at the city of Barry and have interest in development in both areas.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make it clear that, and I'm sure every council around the table would agree with me, that they're all part of the city of Barry, residents within our city. And the conversation that happened last week and this week is kind of highlighted a little bit of the language, although technical, it may not be the most inclusive or the most welcoming. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that I, the language, the technical language certainly isn't, I'm sure, the feel around this table when it comes to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Corser. Any other comments on the main motion?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. You might have to give me a little bit of leeway on this, but I am speaking to this whole discussion. So, I said most of my comments in the, for the amendments, but really quickly, and it's topical to this, I really want to give an apology to Council Kangal, here's why. Because I was reflecting the last four minutes here. I told Council Harris I'm probably not going to speak, and I'm like, I got to go back on it, I am going to speak. I think it speaks to the, I was in crisis, the fact that I got triggered in that situation. And the apology to Council Kangal is, after her clarification, which I talked over, your clarification, the trial's clarification, which was, no, this one is fair game because if you do it a little bit differently, there's a legal implication which now makes it related to the discussion, meaning your point of orders ad rule. If it was another issue, I don't, maybe that would have been different. But on this one, because of the complexities of the policies and because of, and that is literally the definition, getting triggered by it, I got triggered by it. And why? It's because we're in such a housing crisis that I literally had an emotional trigger response to this. It's because people my age and your age, Mayor Nettle, who did everything right, who got all the education, they're never going to be able to afford to buy if we keep going down this path, and they're struggling to even rent. So, yeah, so I guess it's an apology related to the motion as amended, and I think this goes back to your comment from a year ago and Kim Guthrie's post, that this is a very human aspect and there's lots at stake. And Council Kangal, I'll make direct eye contact with you, I want to apologize on that, not a text, not a conversation explicitly there, and there's a human aspect to this. So, sorry, Council Harris, I did end up speaking.
Thank you, Council. I think Council Kangal's receiving that?
Yeah.
It was rejected because there was no apology needed.
Okay, it's yours anyways.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments on the main motion? Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'll be very brief. When this was first introduced, it started as three of a right to four of a right, and you know, there's federal money, and I think, understanding the pressures we're under in the municipality, I think tonight's meeting shows collaboratively, working together, we can get to somewhere where we're all comfortable representing the people we represent in a fair way, where people are nervous. But I just, it's taken a lot of work, a lot of back and forth, a lot of working on compromise, and it's been a great collaborative effort to get here where a lot of people are nervous about this. But I think, you know, we're trying and we understand the importance of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council Harris?
And maybe quickly, because I thank you, Council Reema. I know we've been in conversation because oft, you know, the attached dwellings have been something that we've really dealt with a significant way and had a lot of challenges, and we're able to come forward with the amendments last term to change the parameters and really reduce the challenges associated with them. And I wanted to share, because a resident of Ward Eight who had come and deputation when we talked about the four units at the very beginning, said to me, and full credit, you know, if the four units were to go, could you please keep the same setbacks and heights that you had just passed to better manage them? So, really appreciate that perspective from residents, really reasonable and fair and understanding, here we are in this housing crisis, and, you know, let's be reasonable. So, I think, I think you framed it really well, Council Hamilton, as far as trying to really maintain the character of our existing neighborhoods and what makes Barry special, but also use the opportunity for new areas and have, you know, what could those areas do as far as adding to housing stock? So, I think we've come to a good place, and I appreciate that we've really tried to do this balance. Ideally, would I like to see a slower approach, that we could see evidence and see what is the impact of things, like how many dogs do you have to now manage with four units or three units? But I don't think that where we are, we're afforded to be taking that much time, even though we're headed on our targets, which was, which we appreciate the effort we've done as a community. But we do have to act, and we're acting, I think, prudently as the best we can with information that we have in front of us. So, I think I really appreciate, you know, where we've landed with the multitude of amendments that have really created some really interesting opportunities, and we have some investigation to find out if some of these things can happen, but I think we're going down the right path. So, thank you, Mayor Nettle.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, council, because this is not comfortable. It is not easy. It's probably not comfortable for anywhere in the city, but there's certain wards where there's a high number of larger lots that are mature neighborhoods that folks were very concerned about. And I think that, as Council Hamilton said, as Council Harris just said, this is a very balanced approach we've come up with this evening. I think that, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but I believe that the federal government will be happy with the overall approach. And yes, there are other funding opportunities coming up. I'm not sure that we'd be seen as a candidate in the successive requests, but we're certainly putting ourselves into a position to be able to be. The thing I think is most unique about the conversation we've had, when I was a councillor and I was probably not just someone who saw this, but I was somebody who maybe the CAO probably agreed that I may have encouraged it, there'd be a very developer on one side, resident on the other, and, you know, council feeling stuck in between. And I think through all of the conversations, like Council Hamilton flagging the, like we were leaving some of our own residents outside of the intended purpose of our motion, right? Like, we were leaving our own people on the outside. We had a number of amendments last week, this week, that I think puts the residents and the development community and the city all on the same side, which is very unusual. It's very, very, very unusual. So, I hope that is maintained. I hope that we have good corporate citizens in our development community, I believe we do, and I'm really happy to see that, you know, essentially, the deputations here this evening were mostly, if not all, positive, which is a rare thing when we're making changes to development policies and to housing and setbacks, et cetera. So, thank you for everyone for the work you've done, and I'll call the vote.
Record a vote, please.
Record a vote, it's been requested by Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'm going to start with Council Reema.
Yes.
Council Nixon?
Yes.
Council Kangal? Yes. Council Corser?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Council Nagusi?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council Morales?
Yes.
Council Hamilton?
Yes.
And Mayor Nettle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Here's the motion as amended. Section F, Deputy Mayor, section F.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Council Harvey, that section F, the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Council Harvey, that section F of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be adopted. This is 24G-061, delegation of authority for signing artwork loan agreements and artist agreements for temporary works. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Council Harvey, that section G of the General Committee Report dated March 20, 2024, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that Section G of the General Committee Report dated March 20th, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. This is 24G062, correspondence from circulation, uh, circulation list of March 20th, regarding a quest of the province to extend the removal date of listed properties from municipal heritage registers. And 24G063, the correspondence from circulation list for March 20th, from the Town of Aurora, concerning the usage of school board facilities available to local municipalities. Any questions or comments with regards to the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson, 11.2.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated March 27th, 2024, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated March 27th, 2024, now circulated to be received. This is 24G064, confidential instructions to be applied to negotiations related to a potential acquisition of property matter, personal information matters about identifiable individuals, and legal advice, city capital projects. Are any questions or comments with regards to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated March 27th, 2024, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated March 27th, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. 24G065, confidential instructions to be applied to negotiations related to a potential acquisition of property matter, personal information matters about identifiable individuals, and legal advice for city capital projects. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. Counselor Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Motion without notice, uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, motion without notice, 2024 Barry Airshow Event, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning the 2024 Barry Airshow
It's moved by Counselor Harvey, seconded by Counselor Nixon, for a motion without notice, 2024 Barry Airshow Event, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning 2024 Barry Airshow Event. Two-thirds majority is required, there's no debate on the matter, all those in favor, it carries. Counselor Harvey?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, 2024 Barry Airshow Event, one, that the City of Barry accept the opportunity from CFB Borden to deliver a 2024 Barry Airshow Event on Barry's waterfront, and that staff in Recreation and Culture and Economic and Creative Development Departments work in partnership with CFB Borden, County of Simcoe, and the Lake Simcoe Regional Airport, and other community stakeholders to deliver the event. And two, that an additional $150,000 be allocated to the 2024 operating budget for a total budget of $180,000 to deliver a 2024 Barry Airshow, with up to $110,000 being funded from the Tourism Reserve and the remaining $70,000 to be raised through sponsorship.
It's moved by Counselor Harvey, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that the City of Barry accept the opportunity from CFB Borden to deliver 2024 Barry Airshow Event on Barry's waterfront, and that staff in Rec and Culture and Economic and Creative Development Departments work in partnership with CFB Borden, County of Simcoe, and the Lake Simcoe Regional Airport and other stakeholders to deliver the event. Then additional $150,000 be allocated to the 2024 operating budget for a total of $180,000 to deliver 2024 Barry Airshow, with up to $110,000 being funded from the Tourism Reserve and the remaining $70,000 to be raised through, uh, sponsorship. That motion's on the floor, Counselor. Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, just briefly, it's, uh, pretty self-explanatory, and I think any of us that have been to the airshow, especially over the last few years, um, have seen the success that it has had and the thousands of people that it draws to, uh, not only our waterfront, but into our downtown. It'd be interesting to know how many are from out of town that potentially are then also staying at area hotels and things of that sort. But it, especially during the anniversary one, it was really impressive with the volume of people that came out, and, uh, it's, uh, it's definitely shown that it's worth having on an annualized basis if, if, uh, the Air Force is available to do it. Um, and obviously, the more people that we can draw into our downtown and, and all the economic spinoffs in relation to that, uh, and obviously, this kind of ties into my position on the Tourism Board also.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, through you, Mayor Nuttall. First of all, I want to recognize, um, Ms. Slickler, um, just the work from last year, um, with her team, from the dinner and everything. And, and I remember being there with Mayor Nuttall, we were there when they, they started the show, and, uh, it had to be, and I don't want to sell it short, but well over 60,000 people. It was spread all the way around the bay, both sides, and it was incredible. And I remember saying to Mayor Nuttall, "It's too bad we can't do this here every year." This year being the anniversary of 100 years, it was, I thought, wow, would it be ever great? So, uh, the work that Counselor Harvey's put in this, but I, I also know that Mayor Nuttall has, uh, been very passionate about this, and I'd be remiss not to mention our honorary Colonel, uh, Mr. Hayes in the audience, and somebody who was a big part to this, and getting certain things to Barry for our dinner. So I think this is great, and like I said about the tree lighting, you know, our open aired them up, anything we can do to drive the public downtown, to show them the great stuff that's going there, is great for this city. So I will be in total support for this, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions from members of council? Thank you, uh, Counselors for putting forward. Counselor Nixon, obviously, is a ward counselor, uh, it's going to be great for BIA, great for the downtown. I, I want to, want to highlight a few things on this. There's so much happening the next 12 months, uh, with relation to, uh, recognizing those who've served, our veterans, uh, the, uh, different, uh, battles that shaped the world, quite frankly. Uh, 80th anniversary of D-Day coming up, 100th anniversary of the Royal Canadian Air Force, uh, we've now got the airshow coming here. I believe there's going to be some other announcements on some pretty incredible, uh, relationship pieces between Base Borden and Barry, as well as the Green Simcoe Foresters and the City of Barry. Uh, there's just so much to, um, both celebrate and, and, and stand back and say thank you for, uh, in, in this space. And I think that this airshow will help do that. And so, uh, the opportunity and the gracious, uh, way in which Base Borden has, uh, included the City of Barry in this, uh, is incredible to see. And while I, I love Base Borden, uh, Ms. Slickler, I hope that, uh, this stays here every year. Um, there's no doubt going to be some complaints because of some really, really loud engines flying by. Uh, but the benefit to the city and the education for our young people, uh, in a time where to have served in, in World War II, for instance, uh, one would need to be 98 years of age or older. I think it's, uh, it's an incredible benefit to the young people of our city to be able to experience this airshow and see some of the history live. So, uh, I really do hope, Counsel, I know that everyone's in favor, but I really do hope, Counsel, uh, not just for this year, that we can really build something around this, uh, for the City of Barry going forward. There will be families from everywhere, uh, coming to check this out, and it's just another way of us putting the City of Barry on the map. Uh, so I will call the vote, all of those in favor, and it carries, and I believe, Counselor Nixon, that you're moving from seconder to mover.
Seconder to mover, I'm just moving right along here as, uh, yeah. Um, yeah, it's a sure sign that spring is coming because the, the BIA is talking about patios and, and so am I. I would like to make a direct motion, uh, based on the timeframe involved. Direct motion being that, uh, Business Licensing Bylaw, or move, sorry. Oh, I am sorry, I was so excited about the patios. How do they open now? Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Reema. Uh, motion without notice, uh, 2024 patio programming, uh, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a direct motion without notice concerning the 2024 patio programming.
It's moved by Counselor Nixon and seconded by Counselor Reema, a motion without notice, 2024 patio programming, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning the 2024 patio programming. A two-thirds majority is required and no debate is allowable at this point. So all those in favor, it carries. Over to you, Counselor Nixon.
Okay. Again, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Reema. Um, that Business Licensing Bylaw 2006-266, as amended, be further amended, that the downtown BIA patio program season be defined as the second Friday of April through to November 15th, in alignment with the city winter control and spring cleanup maintenance
It's moved by Counselor Nixon and seconded by Counselor Reema, the 2024 patio programming, the Business Licensing Bylaw 2006-266 is amended, be further amended, that the downtown BIA patio program season be defined as the second Friday of April through to, uh, I'm sorry, the second Friday of April to November, oh, okay, I see that now, uh, to November 15th, in alignment with the city winter control and spring cleanup maintenance schedules. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion, and Counselor, would you like the floor?
Yeah, certainly, thank you. Um, yeah, basically, what they're asking for is just more to define it so that it's a set period every year. In this case, this year, I think it only makes a couple of days difference. Uh, they just want to make sure that they are able to put them out, uh, come Friday, as opposed to a particular date. There might be a Sunday, they'd obviously rather have them out on a Friday. And with the warmer weather coming, hopefully, uh, uh, second Friday of April is a nice warm day, and, uh, hope to see you down there. Yeah.
Counselor, if the winter and the snow comes back, it's because you jinxed it tonight. I just want to point that out. Uh, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. We're now on to, uh, inquiries, as there's no presentations, or any members of council have inquiries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Um, most council might have seen, uh, the report, um, in regards to our speed cameras. I was just through you to staff, and I think it would be Ms. Banfield. Um, when the, when you see the report, it looks like it's become a cash grab. And, uh, I, I just wanted to maybe have staff the opportunity, you know, to explain, you know, for people who are watching and stuff, that there is a, a cost to it, and the intentions of them were to change behavior. And, and when we voted in favor of these, I remember, I think it was Counselor Jim Harris, said that the greatest goal would be that this would cost the city money, because that, it would change the behaviors, you know, and that would mean that people had slowed down, and we had invested in the cameras and not needed them. And I just think the, the, the report looked, um, like it was, you know, a cash grab, that it was 100% profit, and, uh, you know, I, I believe this council's strategic priority was the safety of our, our kids getting to and from school and trying to change the behaviors that drive them. So if you could just kind of explain some of the, the costs associated, um, to the corporation?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to the Deputy Mayor. So ultimately, um, the, the program is very complex, and I mean, even initially, $300,000 of an investment, uh, was approved by, that, the then-council in 2022. So there is, uh, absolutely an investment in, in many, many things to operate the program, uh, not only staff, um, security, the security around the, um, the actual processing center, obviously, computers and technology and software, the cameras themselves, um, there's a lot of things that, um, absolutely go into the running of the program. So, uh, the intention never, ever has been that it's a cash grab. It 100% has counsel at the ti, at the time, and, and continues to be very laser-focused on community safety zones. Um, you know, it is a pilot program, council has been nimble, you, you took back the ability to change the, the time of day around school zones to make it simpler for people to know when the 40 kilometers an hour is, is, uh, relevant. Um, and this is our very preliminary data to, to share with you. So, um, you know, and also, we started with the two highest areas in terms of speed. Um, and so I'm not even necessarily sure, it's too early to say if that's, um, going to be consistent, um, in fractions and consistent, um, revenue, I guess, if you want to call it that, um, because it really, we did start with two, um, areas that not only have high volumes, but had, um, hi, as, the, the worst kind of speed rates. So, um, as we run the program a little bit more, change the locations, report back to council, you know, there'll be more fulsome data, um, but, but as I said, rest assured, there are costs associated with, with running the program. Uh, and again, it comes back to, we really do want to see the behaviors changed. I think some of that early data showed, um, that there has been, um, certainly when the cameras are operating, but even a little bit beyond that. So, um, it's still a bit early to, to kind of have all that, um, data, but I know that we wanted to get something in front of council, because we know that it was, um, certainly a hot topic. I hope that helps.
Very much, and just to, just to follow up to that, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we said that any profit at the end, after costs and associated, that it would be reinvested into more of the community safety program, correct?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to the Deputy Mayor. Absolutely, that was always, again, the, the intention, that if there was additional revenues, that it would be, uh, put right back into community safety measures. So that could mean additional cameras, it could be permanent speed bumps, it could be all sorts of things. Um, but absolutely, that's the direction, um, from council, is to, uh, to reinvest that money in, um, things that will make our community safer.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Hild?
Thank you, and through you, I just have a, a follow-up question based on what Deputy Mayor Thompson said. Again, thank you for the report, I think it's really helpful to see the data at this time. Uh, I was really encouraged to see the effectiveness, you know, speeds being reduced by 12 kilometers and 13 kilometers, uh, an hour in the two areas, considering prior, speeds were 74 in a 40, 69 in a 40. Um, so I think it really does speak to the intent of promoting safety. That being said, I also was pleasantly surprised to see this reduction. Uh, I know there were some concerns that when the speed cameras are, are in use, that the flashing beacon lights, uh, had to be disengaged as per provincial legislation, and we heard from a lot of residents, uh, in that respect. Uh, so happy to see that actually the speed cameras were effective, without the flashing lights, great. I do still wonder if they would be, uh, even more effective if you had both the cameras and the flashing lights. And I remember we had a conversation around this table, that perhaps we could provide feedback to the provincial government to sort of identify that this is a bit of a concern, uh, and perhaps take a, a look at that legislation. But I don't think we ever gave any direction, I think it was just a conversation we had. So I, I did ask staff if there was any direction, if there had been any conversations with the provincial government, and there was none. So I just want to maybe verify, confirm.
I believe there was actually a, I penned a letter that included both that and the flashing arms, arms on buses, and that was sent to the Minister of Transportation.
Excellent, okay, so it's been done, perfect. We haven't heard anything back, I'm assuming, at this point.
I was with him yesterday, and I totally forgot.
Okay.
So I will follow up.
Reminder, maybe we could follow up and, and see, because I think as we continue to use these cameras, it would be great. Again, if the intent really is to change behavior and promote road safety, um, then this is another thing we really want to keep on.
Yeah, I'll send a message tonight and see, find out where we're at. Any other, uh, inquiries? Counselor Corser?
Just on the same topic, um, I'm scrambling, looking for the report, and unfortunately, right now, it escapes me. But I just was really taken aback, I knew that we had actually a speeding problem on Ann Street and, and other areas, but the numbers of the first month was really staggering to me, about how many people, I don't know if anybody left the table, but I was like, what was the number? So for December, was it? It was, uh, 16, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Ms. Banfield, uh, it's 16,348 people were speeding that were, that were, were It was 16, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Banfield, 16,348 people were speeding that were recorded speeding within that area between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM in a school zone? Am I reading that correctly?
Through you Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Courser, so on page three, you're talking about Ann Street, so it talks about the number of violations recorded, January, February, March, and that total is 35,674.
In three months, and this isn't the amount of people ticketed, there was 4,677, I'm sorry, I'm just talking about the information for Ann Street. There was, so if this was truly, as deputy mayor pointed out, if this was a cash grab, I'm sure we would have tried a little harder to get tickets on all those people, but obviously not, it's not a cash grab, but for 35,674 people were recorded in that time period, in a three-month period, speeding in a school zone between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. I think that's a real wake-up call for some of the speeds on our streets, and of course, the other area was, the other area, Big Bay Point, was even worse, it was 58,258 people recorded speeding in a 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Again, not the amount of tickets that were given out, there was only 4,563 tickets, but those numbers are incredibly staggering, that these are school zones and safety, like community safety zones, and I just really wanted to highlight that for, I'm glad that we have these cameras, and I hope that they are more effective as we go around the city, I see that the numbers were dropping as the longer the cameras were there for, I think it's an excellent program, and I'm really looking forward to expanding it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, I'll ask everyone to stick to inquiries, please, any other inquiries? Seeing none, we're going to go to announcements, deputy mayor? No announcements? Councillor Nixon? We're going to shake it up this week.
I'd like to announce the patio changes, could we talk about that? Actually, Monday, April 8th, 2024, we are having, yes, we were having a Ward 2 Town Hall meeting on the patio. Mayor Nuttall and I will be there, Monday, April 8th, from 6:30 to 8:00, we're having it this time around at Traditions Banquet Hall, which is at the Sheba Shrine, 142 John Street. We were going to cover a lot of topics, but the main ones will be, we'll be talking about changes in curbside collections starting May 1st, we are going to have an update from Berry Police Services on some Ward 2 statistics, and we are also going to have staff from Parking Services who will be on site to assist with Berry residents wanting to get their waterfront parking passes set up, so hopefully, we have a lot of people there and we're looking forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you councillor, and councillor Kungal?
Thank you, because I know we're not meeting next week with the holiday, so I wanted to make sure people knew a couple of pieces, and I don't know if you're speaking to the cleanup, spring cleanup?
It's in, you do it.
Okay, so I wanted to do a quick shout-out, so we have the Spring Into Clean program that has been relaunched, and we have, I think, just refresh this information on the City of Berry website. If you're interested in registering online, please do that by April the 11th, you can do that by emailing spring.intoclean@berry.ca or calling the city number 705-739-4285. And this is focused on, one, registering by the 11th, but then a corporate cleanup, school participation days and community cleanup days running across the city between the 19th and the 22nd for different programs. Love to see community groups out there, it's usually well-supported every year, and there's been other great initiatives, but I believe if you look on the City of Berry website, you can also identify, if you've got students interested in this, that they can actually receive community service hours for volunteering, so please check that out and support some of our trash formation initiatives, and there's one, do you want me to do that? We've got councillor Nixon highlighted last week, Battle of the Bands, if you're rocking out in Ward 2 on the patio before the patios are open, you have Battle of the Bands on April the 5th at The Ranch, and that is occurring 7:00 PM on the 5th. The last announcement really is kind of an alert to all of those bird lovers out there that we've got a dead heat tie between the barred owl and the belted kingfisher, and a poor little nuthatch is in third place. Big shame. So, who has yet, I'm asking for a hand, who has voted for the bird? Thank you.
That joke writes itself.
I know, so I'll ask all those in chambers and watching this evening to take a moment at buildingberry.ca, you have until March the 31st, to help actually vote in your City of Berry bird, some school classes have been participating in this, it's a wonderful initiative, and this will all lead up to announcing the Berry Bird on May the 11th during the World Magatory Bird Day, and again, big thanks to City of Berry and the communications team in particular for being able to make this very accessible and helping to engage the public in this initiative.
Councillor Harvey?
Thank you Mayor Nuttall, I want to highlight one of my local restaurants, Tika Fusion at 505 Brine Drive, for the month of Ramadan, up until April the 9th, they are going to be giving away free meals, so it offers customers that can afford to prepay for someone else's meal, and then Tika Fusion will actually match that meal, and then they've got the free meal tickets hanging up in the window, so those that are in the area that can't afford to purchase a meal at the time, they just grab one of the receipts off the window and go in and receive a free meal. So, it's another good feel, community type event that obviously the restaurant industry went through a tough time, but it's just going to show you that the restaurant community's still out there and really trying to help the community, especially during these economic times, and also too, obviously, during a special time of year for the community.
Wonderful, wonderful, any other announcements? There's a couple, I'm just going to do off the cuff that I just remember, first of all, I think on behalf of the city to the Muslim community, want to wish a happy Ramadan, and at the same time, it was also Holi, so if you're celebrating Holi, we want to wish you great celebrations, and we also have a growing Persian community here in the City of Berry, and councillors Anne Marie Kungal and Amy Courser, myself, were at a gala on Saturday night with the Berry Persian Association, celebrating No Ruz as well, and I think it was about 225 or 250 people there, which was really neat to see, so if you're celebrating No Ruz, we want to wish you all the best on behalf of the City of Berry as well. Another item, just off the cuff, that happened yesterday, and I want to recognize Invest Berry, Ms. Slickler, your team, your partners, because I think there was a bunch of folks that have been involved, so I'm going to do an announce inquiry where I announce it, but you can fill in the dots on who else was involved in really making this happen, but yesterday in the provincial budget, there was a million dollars allocated to create a regional center for us, an innovation center, and in the budget, it actually specified that that regional center needs to be here in the City of Berry. That's a big win for the City of Berry, it's another million dollars, like I haven't seen three weeks like this ever, it's wild, I can't wait to see what's next week, but that is something that your team's been working on for a long time, and so if you could fill in on the announcement on what I should say in terms of how long we've been working on this, who the partners were getting to the table, and what it means to the community.
Thank you very much, Mayor Nuttall. The regional innovation center concept, province has supported many around the province, and the closest ones for us for a very long time have been Markham and Sudbury, and as this particular area, Berry broader area have been growing, we've really felt that gap in that support, and what innovation centers do is they really drive and accelerate growth in those high potential firms, often in very specific areas, so bringing in the expertise, bringing in the post-secondary support to really drive commercialization of projects and really getting new ideas to market. And so, many of the players, the city invested early in the Sandbox, there have been others that have cropped up in our surrounding region, Innisville, Collingwood, Aurelia, and so what this does is this really drives the capacity to do more. We've been very fortunate to work with Henry Burnick Entrepreneurship Center, their connection with innovation space, I think is a wonderful tie-in, and of course, the support of Minister Kanjan and her office, who have been absolutely open ears in early discussions that also included the Sandbox, but it really has been all the players in the ecosystem, both locally and in our broader area, that have rallied around this concept, and we are very, very pleased to see it come to fruition, so thank you very much for the opportunity to recognize.
Yeah, thanks Stephanie, if you can make sure that all of those that were involved are properly thanked and recognized, this is another example of partnership working, like the province, the city, Georgian College, the Burnick Center, the Sandbox, the County of Simcoe, I think I'm missing somebody, but it's working, we're getting recognized, and we're getting funding, and, you know, in terms of the growth of our local economy, this was a huge announcement for us, so we'll see what they give us next week. So, I proclaim the week of April 1st to April 7th as the RCAF Centennial Week, and I believe that we have a flag raising tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM, 10:30 AM, and there's also before that at 10:00 AM, I believe, some celebrations and recognitions happening inside of the rotunda. A number of city services will be affected this weekend by Easter, including the Berry Transit Services curbside collection, hours of operation, city facilities and community centers, so for more information on the affected city services and facility closures, please visit berry.ca. To all those celebrating Easter, we wish you a happy Easter as well, and great time with family and friends. Due to the holiday, as was said earlier, we won't be having a general committee meeting or council meeting next week on April 3rd, and we'll resume on the 10th of April. Deputy Mayor, I believe that you have the bylaws.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. Lead be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second and third time and finally passed, Bill 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28.
It's moved by deputy mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, the lead be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed, Bills 22 to 28. Any questions or comments with regards to the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor, it's carried, deputy mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That lead be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second and third time and finally pass Bill 29.
It's moved by deputy mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, the confirmation bylaw that lead be granted to introduce the following bill, this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 29. All, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I just jumped to the end, all those in favor, it carries. Other motion to adjourn, councillor Hamilton, councillor Harris, all those in favor?
That was the update from the City Hall, thank you for watching.